It is seven PM, and so I will call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for, let's see, today's Tuesday, November 2nd. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure the microphones are turned on and that you speak clearly into them, so the folks at home can hear you. Applicants and speakers addressing the board, please identify yourself for the record as our minutes are being prepared from the recording. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for December 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in this room, which is the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, we don't have to appoint any alternates into voting positions, because we've got all full members here tonight. With that in order, completes the call to order, and we are at our Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Robert, is there any report tonight?
I have nothing tonight.
Do any members of the board have any questions for the staff? Nope, I do not either. Okay, next item, three on our agenda is the discussion of the Capital Improvements Program for Merrimack Village District. I have a note here that, at their request, they'd like to postpone that till our December 7th meeting. Since that is not a public hearing, I don't think that we have to vote on continuing that, Robert, correct? Okay, so if anyone was here for that capital improvement plan, tune in December 7th. Same bat time, same bat channel. Item four on our agenda is Merrimack Premium Outlets LLC, as the applicants and owners review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved conditional use permit to permit a variety of temporary event uses and other permanent customer amenities within the existing parking areas. The parcel is located at 80 Premium Outlets Boulevard, in the I-2 Industrial Zone, the Ochre Conservation District, and the Wellhead Protection Area. It's tax map 3C, Lot 191-1, case planning board 2021-40. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just by way of summary, this came up, these discussions kind of started earlier in the year, where the outlet mall has expressed to staff a desire to hold some temporary events onsite, excuse me. We advise them that the way to go about that would have to be to amend their conditional use permit, which is what they're here to do tonight, and then subsequently their final site plan to account for the events. The applicant can speak more to them, they kind of put a narrative together that describes some of the events that they're talking about, such as motorcycle classes, automotive display, but not sales, maybe music and/or food festivals, things of the like. Again, you can certainly talk to the applicant more about any of their potential ideas. But this is a reminder, this is just the CUP, this is not going to give them permission to do anything, this is just going to open that door to go get that site plan amended, at which point, if they were successful, that's when the temporary events could happen. In terms of the more permanent amenities, the plan does show some temporary, excuse me, some permanent EV charging spaces, as well as a drive-through ATM and donation box area, which again, they can get more into.
So those structures, the ATM and the EV charging stations, are those ultimately going to be a part of a future site plan, or are we approving those tonight and they can build those?
That would be the idea, that they get it put on the site plan, they add it to the CUP now, and then put on the site plan as a part of all of this.
Okay, Robert, thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on forward. Thank you for coming, and I'll ask you to introduce yourself and present the project, but let me begin by apologizing that it has to be a two-step process to amend the one thing and then do another one, and you've got to come twice for this, because it seems like it's simple enough and we would be able to do it in one. But please introduce yourself and tell us about what you're proposing.
Good evening, I'm Mark Verostik, Senior Project Engineer with VHB in Bedford. With me tonight is Vincent Cosco with Merrimack Premium Outlets. The project that, the conditional use permit that we're presenting tonight is, as Robert said, for both some permanent customer amenities in the parking areas, as well as, and I'll zoom in in a second, as well as some temporary event-type uses that they would like to hold in some of the perimeter parking areas around the site. The, so the site, as everybody is probably well aware of, is on Premium Outlets Boulevard, off of Industrial Drive. And just to zoom into the site a little bit. So the, the areas designated in bluish shading are the areas intended for the temporary events. It wouldn't be all of the blue areas at one time, but these are just trying to set up the desired locations for any given event that they may want to do. And I can zoom in, as was discussed, some of the permanent amenities, we're looking at a potential ATM or drive, either drive-up or drive-through ATM in this general location. And as Robert said, if we are approved to move forward, the site plan would actually show, you know, the more permanent structure and layout of how that would operate. Currently, we're showing temporary EV charging, or sorry, permanent EV charging locations in these two areas, and the location for...
Show me which two areas for us, I couldn't see where you were pointing to on that.
Sorry about that. There's one in this upper corner, just behind Building 1. Behind the pole lot, yep. And then, one in the, in the upper right-hand corner, adjacent to Building 7, so...
Okay.
And then, down in this, in the corner of this remote Lot B, is where they would like to have some donation bins.
Okay.
So this shows, it's just a zoomed-in version of the same plan. The current parking constructed onsite is 3,092 parking spaces, based on the 5.5, the ratio of 5.5 per thousand square feet of retail area. They would require 2,254 spaces, so they have a, they have an excess of 838 spaces currently on the site for the, for the buildings that are constructed. So any, you know, combination of those uses would, you know, would use some or all of that excess parking. And, you know, Vincent can speak to some of the operational requirements that they have, but as you can imagine, they, they wouldn't be looking to hold these events necessarily during any high-peak seasonal times, Black Friday and things like that, they wouldn't be looking to, you know, impact their own operation with any of these events.
Barbara, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I'm getting a little confused. So I'm seeing you've got Phase 2 buildings going in, where I park my car, and where a lot of employees park, so that's something to consider as well. But where are you going to do the entertainment venue? Is that, that's not the building, right?
Yeah, maybe I can help with a little bit of that. My understanding of this presentation is that the Phase 2 buildings are shown on here only for an illustration of spaces that had been reserved in the original plan
Right.
For Phase 2, and they're not putting those here now.
I'm not seeing where the entertainment's going. That's what they're here for, right?
The event spaces they're talking about reserving in the blue areas, whether those involve stages, or music, or something like that?
I see what you're saying.
We have to ask them and talk about it.
Okay. Doesn't leave much parking at Christmas.
Yeah. Maybe you can elaborate on that, instead of me kind of answering the questions, but my understanding is that these are, you know, weekend events or something like that, and that you wouldn't host them in inconvenient times of the year?
Yeah, that's correct. Vincent Cosco from Simon Property Group, for the record. So we would not be looking to do any large events, take up significant amounts of parking during Christmas season. You know, what we might have in the parking lot for the November-December time period might be the collection boxes, which might take up five spaces, might be, you know, last year we had the potential for, we were asked to bring in a COVID testing box, I think that took up maybe 10 parking spaces. So stuff like that, we might have in place for the holiday season, but nothing of significant weight. We don't want to impact negatively the customer experience, nor do we want to take up parking that our retailers need.
So in the information you provided, you gave a few examples of things that you'd want to have as temporary events, but can you talk to those a little bit? Tell us about the ones in your, in your submission, and whatever else you might have in mind, give us a flavor of what these might look like.
Yes, sure, so Simon nationally has an arm that actually goes out and negotiates these types of deals, and they do it for the shopping malls, they do it for the premium outlets. I've been at, I've been managing, I don't know, maybe eight or nine different shopping centers for Simon in the past. I've seen the following types of deals. Vehicle displays and vehicle test drives, farmers' markets, tent sales, carnivals, circus, food truck festivals, medical testing and medical vaccination boxes, static displays and sales displays, like from a truck or a van, collection centers, like a good-will box. EV charging stations are actually being negotiated now, if we can get the approval, and we've been approached a couple of times nationally by leasing for a drive-up or drive-through ATM.
Okay. When you think of, when you talk about something being a temporary event, what does temporary mean? Like, some of the ones, like a circus or a carnival, I get that, they show up for a few days, or maybe a week or something, they go away.
Right.
When you talk about static displays, or vehicle displays, or that sort of thing?
Those are type, those are typically a week or so as well.
Okay. Is it, if in our consideration of this, we define temporary to mean two weeks, or something like that, does that suit your needs, or would that cause you challenges?
I think for events, that would certainly suit our needs, but for displays and/or a collection box-type thing, or a tent sale would probably, a week would probably be, you know, sufficient. The ones that I've seen, we've done weekend to weekend, so that's a total of nine days. So event-type things, we could do within a couple of weeks, for sure.
Okay. I don't want to restrict what you're proposing, I mean, ask for what you think you need, and then we'll talk over the pros and cons of it. I just want to make sure we understand that temporary means that it comes and goes, and it doesn't become, you know, Auto Fair's backup lot, where they, you know, show off all their cars. Or if it is, then say so, and let's review that as a, as a site plan. Not to pick on Auto Fair, I just pulled them out of the air, I just, I have no idea that you have any connection with them at all. So several areas are blue. Are you planning the possibility of doing multiple things at once, or using all of these event spaces at once, or is this just options to make sure that it's all available for choices as they come up?
For the most part, it's options. We, I can't, I can't envision a time with that we would use, even consider using all of those spaces at one time. But there are definitely times I could see us using more than one location, i.e., if we had an annual deal for collection boxes, or if we had something going on in E-Lot and something going on in B-Lot at the same time, maybe not the whole lot, but in those particular blue areas, yes.
I think collection boxes and those sorts of things are, have such a smaller footprint than a circus or a carnival.
Absolutely.
That they almost seem like they're a different cat, and wouldn't trouble, I think, any of us to sort of see this happen, and not that I'm opposed to the Ferris wheel and the big top either. Some of the areas around Lot A look like it's kind of the perimeter and the, and the margin area. How would you plan to use those, or what's the sense of what, how that would be part of event space?
So the area to the left, my left, when I look at Lot A, that's the main drive-through, that's the main drive area, right, that road to the left. So that might be desirable for a prospective week-long display. Same with the area in Lot A, to the, to the bottom area. It's an area that's easily accessible through the drive area to the bottom of Lot A, where that, where that larger blue space is, where somebody could come in and we could do a tent sale there, that type of thing.
Okay. So the area that's along the driveway for Lot A, how wide is that? In feet or something? If you're doing a display there, what would, what kind of things would you display, like cars, or sheds, or?
The, the long, narrow strip that's, that's, that runs parallel here, it's, it's the depth of the parking stall, so it's roughly 18 feet deep.
Okay, so it's pretty wide, I guess you could do some pretty significant displays or something there.
What's, what's there now?
Parking and trees?
Yeah, well, I see where the parking is, but what's on that narrow strip now?
Those are parking spaces.
Yeah, parking spaces.
So we're eliminating parking spaces?
Temporarily for the display, yeah, that's what we're looking for, yep.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Yeah, for whatever day or week, or, or period, temporary period, there's a display there, or some other event, those spaces would be used, but if you do those in September or something, plenty of other spaces available, I guess that's the sense of things.
And, you know, I've been with the center for five years, we've not used any of those locations in Lot A, we just didn't want to exclude them as we're coming up to you guys looking for approvals.
Understood. So the ATM and the EV stations certainly seem to be the trend these days, to have a drive-up ATM and EV station, so I can't think of, you know, any questions to ask about those, other than, they seem to be located, the EV stations seem to be located at the perimeter, the extreme ends of the shopping center, and those tend to usually get sort of the prime spots up front. Is there a reason behind the choice of putting the EVs kind of in the back in the corners?
The, the size of the transformers that would be required for those stations kind of helps select where we put them.
I mean, I don't drive an EV, so it doesn't make any difference to me, but it just seems a little different than a lot of approaches that you see, where they tend to get the prime spots. Is there events that you'd have, like a food truck festival, or something that has the potential to serve alcohol, beer vendors, or anything like that outside?
We haven't had one yet, but I would say yes, I think the, what kind of brought this to light for us was some discussions with the folks that do the Bacon and Beer Festival and the Rib Fest.
Not familiar with those guys.
We're going to do a scaled-down version, and when those questions were asked of community development.
Yeah.
It kind of brought it to light for us, so...
Sure.
Yeah, we would consider it, we've not done one, but we would consider it, and we'd be careful as to when we did it and where we did it.
I have some involvement with the folks that organize the Bacon and Beer, and then the Rib Fest is a Rotary event, and we're members, several of us, well, former and new, current members, new members of Rotary, so we're all kind of connected with that. Not that it would present a conflict of interest to consider your project because of that, because there's no financial interest involved, but just to let you know, we're kind of familiar with some of the background with that. Would there be a potential that any of your special events would use fireworks?
I don't think so. It's certainly nothing that I've envisioned and considered, or we've been asked about.
Okay. Live music?
Potentially, yes.
Do you have a sense of, would that be wherever it suited you on the blue areas, or is there a particular way that you would set that up consistently?
Yeah, no, I think for live music, depending on the time of day, the type of music, you know, we would want to be careful about abutting the, what looks to me, the northern area, where the residential area is, I would want to put something like that more towards the Turnpike side of the property.
Okay.
Would you, would you consider limiting hours on those?
Yes.
On live music? What's your normal operations on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, late closing time?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yep.
And so if you guys did have some weekend festival, or whatever, it would close when the shops close?
Likely. I guess there's also the possibility that we would be requested of the applicant to run till 10 or 11, but if we had something in right, you know, if we had a limit on that, then we would use the limit.
I don't have any particular limit in mind that says it's, you know, wrong to be going at 10 o'clock, as long as it's not bothering the neighbors, it's positioned right, and that sort of thing. Having worked with some of the Anheuser-Busch events and some other events, you can actually position the stages in the lot where the Phase 2 buildings are shown. Let's see, what lot number is that? I can't tell, it says future buildings, 8, 9, 10, and all that. And direct the speakers away from the neighborhood, and the sound won't carry behind the stage very far at all, and then when they're directed away from the neighborhoods. Probably no, nothing meaningful with respect to your plan, but why is Building 7 shaded differently than the others? Or outlined differently?
I, that's just a printing issue, I think, on, on our behalf, I don't think this is...
No significance to that?
No, I think, I think it just, somebody missed outlining it.
Building 7 is the upper right of the existing six buildings, and for whatever reason, it's light gray. Boundaries instead of black. Is there any sense of timing for when the Phase 2 might come online, and would this, would that change your plan with respect to these temporary event areas, if Phase 2 was constructed?
I don't have a timeframe for Phase 2, nothing, this has been no update that I've received for Phase 2. Would it change? I would say it probably would, because the amount of parking, or the amount of GLA that we'd have would be increased, and the amount of parking would be, you know, I think we'd need more parking, so we would, we would probably want to limit.
So this amendment to the conditional use permit would somehow have to be effective up until the point that Phase 2 was proposed? Because Phase 2 doesn't need an amendment of the conditional use permit, it's already part of it, so you could site plan Phase 2 whenever you wanted. I think some, some kind of condition of approval can manage that concept, I don't think there's any complications with that, but just has to rethink your parking situation if Phase 2 is built in the future, and, you know, it may be a long way off. Does anyone else have comments or questions about what's proposed? Neil?
I do. First off, my apologies to the applicant for being a little bit late, I do take this serious, and unfortunately, I just ran behind. My question is, is there a reason why you prefer Future Building 10, 9, and 8 location over, say, Lot A? And the reason I ask that is, is because when I go up to the outlets now, I park over where Future Building 9 is going to be, and that lot is usually really full. What I do see is that Lot A is always empty. So is there a reason why you're just picking the perimeter over on Lot A, rather than, well, and rather than putting all that blue space on the other side over there? Is there, is there a reason for that?
Well, in the five years that I've been there, Lot A is the lot that fills up first.
Okay.
Has the most turnover, and so I would not, I would not choose Lot A to, to fill with event space, simply for that reason.
Maybe I'm mistaken. As you come into the property?
Yep.
You kind of meander through the little, the entrance?
Lot A is the first lot that you come to.
And that's on your left?
Yes, let me go back to...
Is it more spaces on the right?
Yeah, that's Lot B.
Eventually, when you get a little further down the...
That's Lot B, is that shown?
Yes, that's the first purple lot that you see, so this, this overall...
So I guess what I, I guess, let me, let me reiterate, reiterate. I guess Lot B would be a good spot, and it looks like you have that completely...
Yes, that's typically where we've done.
Just trying to get a lay of the land a little bit, to understand better.
Yeah, understood, yeah. So Lot B would be definitely the, probably our first choice, we do a lot of employee parking there when we have our peak seasons, that type of thing.
So if you're going to take away parking over on that other side, where Phase 2 is, how do you, how do you facilitate, facilitating all the, all the parking? Like I say, now, when we go there, it doesn't quite extend all the way out, but it's usually pretty full. So I'm just care, I'm, I'm just concerned that if you, if you use, if you utilize all that space for temporary events, then there wouldn't be enough parking. Just, just thinking out loud.
Right. I would tell, I guess what I would, how I would reply to that is that Lot A, Lot C, and Lot D are our preferred parking for the customers. It's the parking that fills up and is utilized and turns over the most. Lot E and Lot B, not as much, and Lot F, not as much.
Yeah, I've seen those pretty much empty the whole, a lot of the time? Okay. All right, so you guys, you guys obviously have done your homework to figure out which would be the best putt.
Yeah, we, again, we want to impact the tenants not at all. You know, we want to make sure that there's parking, and there's good parking for the people that come to shop the center. We don't want to do, we don't want to do anything major during any peak time, certainly not during the holiday season, the year-end holiday season, probably not during Memorial Day weekend, probably not during Columbus Day weekend, if we ever get the Canadian tourists back. So, yeah, we've, we've gone through, we've gone through this with the folks from marketing, the folks from operations, the folks from leasing, and these are the locations that we have designated as the most likely to be usable for the majority of the year, for different types of things. And again, we would not plan to use all of those, all of the blue area at one time. We're just trying to present where we would look to do something, yeah, over the course of time, correct.
I get, so I guess the next question that I have, and my apologies if you already covered this, is how, what time of the year is, are you looking to host events, or something? You're going to have an Ice Castles, or something like that in the winter, and have people come in in the winter for your Christmas fair, or is, or is it going to be pretty much during...
I would say that's possible.
That is possible?
I would say that's possible, we have not had that, you know, we have not had that, been, been approached with that type of concept, but I know that we looked at, when, I think my first year there, back in 1617, we looked at utilizing a piece of the, or the northernmost green space, which is kind of underneath where the pH of Phase 2 is, down, to do some type of temporary skating rink as a, as an amenity to the customer, and it just didn't work out with what we have for power there.
Right.
So, I mean, you, yeah, I mean, I don't think anything is really off the table, because, you know, we're not the ones that dream up these things, and they're, they're, they're brought to the shopping centers, and so, so far, the New England, the New Hampshire shopping malls, the Simon malls, have been able to participate in a lot of the things that have been brought to the table. We really haven't participated in much at all, but we want to, you know, we want to be considered.
The reason I ask is because I know, like Lot C, now that I have my bearings, almost a third of it during the winter is just snowbanks, it seems, and so that limits your parking during the winter because of your snow storage.
Yeah, but you won't see snowbanks during the holiday season. That stuff is all pushed off to the Ochs lot. Come January, February, when things slow down for us a little bit, you'll, you'll see, you'll see piles.
Okay, so as usual, so you guys coordinate during your, your not-busy season to, to move it out of the way, or whatever, okay. Yeah, it's really just my concern is that if you take away all this parking spots, and then you have, you know, snow storage, where is everyone going to park?
Yeah, I mean...
Essentially, you're taking away, this is a calculated plan for parking, and if you're going to take away that much space, and then, you know, add things on top of it, it's just...
Right, understood, but I guess I would only reiterate to the board that, you know, we, as a management group, want to make sure that we have sufficient parking for our shop, for our shoppers, and for our, for the retails that are paying us rent.
That makes sense to me.
That's, that's the primary business that we're in. It's primary business that we're in.
As I as I imagine this, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but the use of this space is complimentary to the mall and intended to bring in traffic in times where there isn't any or where the traffic's a little slower. So if you have a antique car show and three hundred people come to look at the cars, well, they might also go over to Columbia and buy some clothing or go to the food court or or, you know, shop around a little bit. And so it enhances the mall. And obviously, on Black Friday, it doesn't need any enhancements. There's no need to to do an event to juice up some of the attendance. But if you had a food truck festival in, you know, August, that might be a great time to try to get, I don't know if your August are busy or not, I'm just picking calendar days, but it might drive a lot of traffic towards some of the shopping opportunities that people have there. But when you think about them as being complimentary, that answers and untangles the question about whether there's going to be a parking conflict because you don't have an event to increase traffic when you already had the traffic, so. Lynn?
I think this is more for Robert. They've expressed that there's there's no real plan for Phase Two to get built at the moment. And we're impacting, obviously, where some of those buildings would go. And if they put those in, then that Lot E, I think, would be critical as far as parking is concerned. So if we allow this, how does that impact if they go ahead and and start building Phase Two? Do they have to come back to planning or?
So what I think the board can do is add a condition of approval, if you were to approve this, that would say something along the lines of the applicant may be required to come back to the board to revise the CUP to ensure adequate parking availability should Phase Two be constructed.
To which board?
Planning Board.
Okay, all right, I'm I'm good with that.
That way, they can put the site plan for Phase Two, but they'd have to amend the event, the CUP and site plan to take care of it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I mean, it's been a long time since I really dug into the plans on Phase Two because it was like two thousand and eight and nine when they were approved.
Few years ago.
It was like kind of the first fifteen minutes when I was on the board, so I didn't know anything about anything. The first meeting I attended was the final vote to approve Phase One. But I thought there was a parking deck associated with Phase Two to manage additional parking. Not that there has to be or you have to answer it today, but I think when they get to Phase Two, parking becomes another problem of that requiring some solution and some thought and some thinking through. Barbara?
Yeah, regarding the anticipated activities, I don't have a problem with stationary displays, that type of thing. But when you're talking about, you know, music festivals, food festivals, farmer markets, maybe not so much, but the others, you know, bringing in live music, you've got one road in and one road out. It's the same road, one lane, and it merges at the southeast corner of Building Two. So if you're backed up in traffic, say, because you had a music festival and some few hundred people decided to attend and do some shopping and they're all leaving at the same time, you might want to think about that because it's going to be miserable for the person who's sitting in that parking, in that line of traffic. So I'm not telling you that it's right or wrong, I'm just saying it won't be me because I know that road. So it it could lead to some, you may want to think about what exactly you're putting in there if it's going to draw a volume of cars.
I I agree with you. I think that certainly on a case-by-case basis, we would look at how we would want to manage traffic if we had an if we had an event that was going to be a pretty popular event. And, you know, we've worked with MPD, probably the whole time we've been open, but certainly my five years that I can speak to. So, yeah, we would, we would want to make that go as smoothly as we possibly could, absolutely.
Yeah.
Makes sense. I know that the parcel A down at the bottom is under construction and doing some things and they're a different party and nothing to do with you guys except for the fact that their plan involves a roundabout that is in your driveway and on your property. Do you know what the plan is and the status of when that might be built?
I do not. I can tell you the last thing that I heard from Tom Monahan was that he would be very considerate and careful not to do construction during our busy season, which to me means November, December. And he also expressed to me that he wanted to get the majority of the construction on-site done, the the site construction, so that he didn't have heavy trucking going around that rotary. So that's all I can tell you. That's the last I've heard of it.
So it seems like since there's no shovel in the ground now, it's nobody's trying to do it now or between now and December. And if it happened in, I don't know, mid-January through May, it'd probably be fine with everybody's schedules and traffic flows and things. But I was just curious about what the plan was for that. Other questions or comments by members of the board? I don't know if this is a typical item that involves a public hearing, but we could certainly open up the floor to any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in. Is anybody in the audience wish to weigh in on the proposal? Seeing none or almost one? Microphone, introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Dennis Conflin. I live just to the north of, I guess that's Lot F. I would just be concerned about the noise level and the time of day of the noise because they're basically directly above that is just a set of power lines. So there's not even forest there and then there's a circular housing complex. So my main concern would just be the lateness of the noise and the level of noise.
Excellent, thank you for that comment. Any other members of the public, please?
I'm Jay Garguski. I live, I guess if up is north, then I'm on the east on Anglewood Drive. I have some of the noise concerns, but I actually have a follow-up question if I may?
Please.
Okay, just curious if the like, I I do drive an EV and I'm curious of like the brand or socket type that you guys are thinking about, if you've honed in on that at all.
I don't know, we'll ask him in a second. Anything else? All right, you want to elaborate on the EV stations that you have planned or the compatibility with different vehicles?
I wish I could answer the question, I don't know.
I don't know anything about it. I don't know what the choices are, which vehicles use what? Or is there some kind of a universal standard that vehicles are adopting or?
I guess what I could tell you is that the company that is negotiating with Simon for several properties has already installed at Pheasant Lane Mall near Burton's Grill, near Burton's and Dick's. So if you went by that shopping center in Nashville, you'd see what we're talking about.
Okay, that helps. I certainly don't think there's any specific planning board requirement to do one thing or the other with what your choices are with those, so. But obviously, the whole point of putting them there is to be as useful to as many people as you can make it. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and board members, the matter before us is to consider whether we would amend the conditional use permit to include in it these purple areas, purple-blue areas for event spaces as been described here. And if so, then the next step for the applicant would be to present a site plan that includes this information plus the EV stations and the drive-up ATM. Is there any further discussion that the board would like to have? If not, is anybody willing and ready to make a motion?
Well, I was I was just thinking that, kind of to resonate what she was, Lynn was saying. Or actually, you had mentioned that if they do utilize these blue spaces and then Phase Two happens, I think it should be in there somewhere where then it's it's not allowed.
Sure.
You know, if Phase Two does happen, then they'd have to come back and reevaluate the parking situation, make sure that it was adequate spaces and then take away the blue spaces.
That's what that's what Robert was saying, it would have to go back. We can make it subject to, if they go into Phase Two, then they have to come back to Planning Board to reevaluate.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understood that right, I guess.
That that makes sense and when it comes time for someone to make a motion, you could phrase it in terms of a motion to amend the conditional use permit subject to the conditions in the staff memo plus the one described by Robert tonight. And that would be a sufficient way to phrase the motion.
Another quick question. I would think that hours and decibels on noise would be subject to Planning Board, correct?
Yeah, all that would come under site plan, though we have nothing in our regulations that is anything noise-related, so I don't.
But that would would all come under Planning Board, not ZDA? Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
So when we saw a site plan, although we don't have regulations that deal with noise, we can certainly ask them that they position live music, you know, X feet from that rear property line and and facing in the right direction and that sort of thing. But that's not here for tonight. Further discussion by members of the board? What is the will of the board then?
You want to do it, you want me to do it? With related to Merrimack Premium Outlets LLC, I would move that we approve this project, subject to the staff recommendations in the memo and that if Phase Two is proposed to commence, it will come back to Planning Board for site plan approval.
The further amendment to the CUP?
Yeah.
Yes.
Further amendment to the CUP, okay. Is there a second for Lynn's motion? I was looking the other way, was that Barbara? Barbara has the second, thank you for that. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to amend the CUP. All right, so we'll see you not too long from now for site plan and we'll go forward from there. I think this is a great addition to the site. I think that it's would be a lot of fun to get up there with a food truck festival or a little music festival or car.
ATMs and EV stations are definitely in the future, so.
When you come for site plan, the only thing I would suggest is think about pedestrian traffic and how they get from your shopping areas out to wherever the event area is going to be. And it doesn't have to be elaborate, but where they cross traffic areas, put crosswalks and, you know, that kind of thing. Other than that, hey, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. That is item four on our agenda. Item five is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any other items of concern that they wish to discuss? Robert, the only one that I would offer up is that it appears that some of the the property over here that was going to be a Lebanese restaurant seemed to have eroded down into the road quite substantially. Someone might want to take a look into.
They're they're, yeah, they're aware of it.
Already already under control?
Yeah.
It has, it's all, oh, it's massive, worse than it's ever been.
Yep.
I mean, there's there's probably a dump truck load of the backyard and the front yard.
Oh, no.
Anyway, no other items of concern? Okay, we're up to the approval of the minutes of October nineteen, twenty twenty-one. What is the will of the board?
I'll let Jamie do that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
As presented.
Motion by Jamie to approve the minutes as written, is there a second?
A second?
Second by Neil, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to approve the minutes. We are completed our business and we're up to item seven, which is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
A second.
She got it.
Barbara and Jamie have the motion and the second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstaining? We are adjourned, thank you very much. Don't forget to turn your microphones off and thank you all for the work.